Obviously, this year, we've already made some staffing changes within the city. We've done some things within IT. We've done some things with HR. We've done things with temporary positions. We've even done, talked about changes with the whole staffing agency and our approach there. We will continue to look for opportunities to be more efficient and more effective with our staffing, not just headcount-wise, but structure and organ chart, all that stuff. We'll say, are we making our people as effective as we could be for the city? At the council's request, we've reviewed this possibility for adding a communications expert on to staff. And the conclusion of our analysis was, yes, we think would be a tremendous asset to have a communications person on staff. When we came to that conclusion, we then took the initiative to apply for a grant to help offset the cost for that position. We did receive that grant. All that information should have been included in the packet that you got. For the first three years, the cost will be offset, not just the base salary for the position, but for the benefits as well. So, the total cost for that employee, again, salary and benefits. Our intention would be that we would add the position the 1st of January of next year of 2016. Base salary, we're looking, a person, a position at this level, we're expecting it would be in the $65,000 to $75,000 a year range for the base salary, plus the benefits on top of that, which would be in the $30,000, $34,000 a year somewhere in that target for benefits for the position. The grant we were awarded would pay 75% of the total of both of those, again, for the first year, 50% of it for the second year, 25% of it for the third year. And I've included a copy of a draft job description for your review to review what the position would do. And generally, we, I kind of break it down into three categories of what the person would do. There would be external communications to share information with the community, with citizens here, via newsletter, via social media, our own city website, those type of things that they would be sharing information with the community. Internal communications, working in human resources for over 20 years, if you do any employee survey, one of the top three things that every survey result says, we need more communication. It's always up there. So, we have, we have nobody in that realm with the city, and I think that would be a huge advantage for us internally, again, as we continue to try to do things across the board from a city standpoint and become more streamlined that way as opposed to department by department. And then lastly, media relations, working with the newspaper, sharing information that we can get it out in the public that way, so a more effective way of doing that. In conclusion, I would say the position will create more transparency of government, create an opportunity for us to share more information and awareness with the citizens and the community of Council Bluffs. It would make us more efficient, more effective for our internal operations. And maybe, from a selfish standpoint, one of the things I'd like us to be really better at is sharing the positive things that are going on. You know, we hear a lot of the, it makes the news when things aren't going well, but we don't get out there on the front end enough of the things that are going well, the good things that are happening, and making a concerted effort to share those stories and get the positive momentum of the city going on, too. So, with that, unless Wendy has anything else to add? See if you guys have questions.
I think the only thing I would add to that is, as John said, we've already made some org changes, some position changes, some process changes. We're continuing to look at all of those. You know, as you mentioned, too, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we have a few more that we think we're planning and making. Ultimately, overall, again, we are looking for those efficiencies, and we think, in the long run, obviously, our ultimate goal is that we'll be at least equal by some of the positions that we'll be adding or deleting, based on where we're at today. We'll be at least equal, if not better off, overall, as far as financially, any of those, you know, that kind of sense. So, I just want to make sure that, again, this is one of many steps we'll be taking, again, removing some, maybe adding a couple, but again, ultimately, overall, in, just in an effort to be more efficient, streamlined, cost savings, more productivity, things like that.
Well, thank you for that, because that was gonna go into some of my questions, because I do realize when we talked about this study going forward, that, you know, efficiency and streamlining and effective use of resources was really the gist of why we're going forward on this. So, what was it that fed the, I guess, the proposition that we needed to start with a communications or a public relations position first before?
First of all, that isn't the case. We've made many changes.
Oh, sure.
So, this isn't the first change. This is one of many changes.
And again, as John alluded, this one has been brought up several times over the past few years, too. So, that's kind of one of the reasons we started looking at this as well, and understanding that we could potentially get some funding for it, things of that sort. So, that was kind of how this one was, one of them that came into play. But as Matt mentioned, we've already made several changes. We already have several others in the works, and some that will come up then at the beginning of the fiscal year as well. So, it's just, I don't know that was necessarily prioritized that this was the time for this one specifically.
Okay. Well, John just mentioned that, that there was a request for the council for us to consider this communications position, and I didn't remember that in past discussions. So, I was just kind of curious about that.
Well, I'm gonna take responsibility for that, because this is something I've been asking for, for at least six years that I remember. I think it's, every year that goes by, it becomes more and more crucial for us to get the information out there to the community, especially given the flood of 2011. If we had a communications officer that was officially in that position and steered the conversation and the information, we did a great job, but we didn't have somebody formalized in that position. So, God forbid, something happens again. We have someone on staff that's trained, ready, able to jump up with the necessary knowledge to go about disseminating information. I like the fact that there's internal communications, because I forgot about that. I've been in, you know, private business, and we always had a company newsletter. What I didn't think of, and you guys did, was the communications training that you would provide for elected officials, because, you know, when, this is a volunteer position, and you don't know the skill level of the people that are serving, and so, any additional training opportunity is welcome.
And not even just for elective officials, let not necessarily interrupt, but even internal staff.
Sure.
There's nothing saying, what do you say, how do you say it, when do you say it type thing? And not that we want to coach or tell them what to say, but just in the respect of, you know, how's the best way to say it?
How to present, right.
Or how to present it, yeah.
I mean, because I'm really quiet and shy, and I need all the help I can to speak in public. That was a joke you tried. So, thank you. Thank you very much. And you did answer my question about the ongoing, how do we pay for this? The grant is great, but, so I understand that as we're achieving efficiencies, and certainly, as our tax base grows, we have more money coming in, that I hope this position doesn't go away, and it's here, you know, for a long time.
Right, and that's the intent. We will ultimately build it in the fourth year 100% into our operating budget.
I'm not even gonna attempt the joke, because I like to talk.
Mine didn't work, so.
Well, I really do like to talk. But this is yet another thing that, yeah, we have been talking about. I can remember, you know, when I started, we threw our different strategic plans and things of trying to have the local government be more and more responsive to the residents so that there's that communication both ways, so that not only they hear all the great things we're doing, but we also hear more folks about things that we could do differently or better. And so, I think in the end, it's a fantastic way to connect people with their government. So, I think this is a great idea, and I support it.
This was one of the issues that, when I ran for my four-year term, that I said then, I'd like to see, because we don't have bulletin boards. We don't have things that people can send to us with suggestions or requests or anything. And if they did, there's nobody there that's designated to respond to that. So, I really like that. And the only question I have is there, are there any job duties that are gonna be absorbed into this job that are either not, that are being done by somebody else that it's going to help in that area also?
Yeah, I definitely see some of that being streamlined as well. Again, you know, as John mentioned, there are some people within some departments that do a little piece here and a little piece there, and maybe with, just within their departments. I do think some of that could bubble up to the top more, and this person could be more responsible, again, as he said, to the ultimate communication across the board. We want to get out of that silos, and they just communicate to their people. Everybody, if it's important enough to communicate, it's important enough for everybody to know about. So, again, I do see this person maybe at least augmenting, if not taking on some of those off of other people's plates, so they can more focus on their jobs instead of the communications piece within the department.
And lastly, since this was a staffing update, I've got a question that doesn't necessarily relate to that particular job. Would it be possible if, even if it was just quarterly, if we could have, you know, different departments come in and kind of tell the council what they're doing in their departments? Because when I went down for the snow day, I learned so many things that I would have never known, had I not been down there. And I've kind of mentioned some of them, but like, the fact that we had city employees that literally designed a new sprayer for our brine trucks that won't clog, saving taxpayers an immense amount of money, because they had to keep replacing them. And it was so successful that they're putting it on trucks across the country now. So, those are things that we would never know. I think it just would be great if we could hear from some of those departments that we don't get to hear from on a regular basis.
I think that's a great request. I also think with this person in place, that would come out. I think you would hear those stories, because this person's, one of their responsibilities will be to go find those stories and share them and get them out, so.
That would be wonderful.
It may be the best approach to have the department heads do that, too. I think it's, one way or the other, it needs to come out.
It does.
So, I think maybe we just evaluate as we get this position on board. If that starts happening, great. If not, maybe move towards something like that.
Yeah, it'd just be really nice. I think there's some big successes in different departments that never really trickle down to the public or to the council, and, you know, it's really, it's kind of exciting when you find out that people are out there really being, not just doing their job, but finding better ways to do it, so.
Yeah, and unfortunately, a lot of those never even get into the newspaper. You know, sometimes we, we've tried, sometimes we haven't, but unfortunately, just they don't all make it, and we have a lot of those really good stories like that as well. I think it kind of goes hand in hand, we just made an adjustment to staff meetings as well, where we're doing similar things. We've got a lot of new department heads, and they may not know what the priorities are for some of the other department heads. So, we've actually incorporated, where the department heads are giving kind of an overview of their own departments within our staff meetings. So, I think some of those we could bring into here, like you said, maybe not specific just overviews, but specific items or topics or things of note that you guys might want to know, so we can incorporate all that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Just another question, then I may have some follow-up later on. I don't want to hold you two. But who is the source of this grant?
Iowa West.
Okay. Has all the money been received covering the three years?
No, we will not receive any funds until the person is hired.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard that the funds had already been.
No, we've received the grant.
The grant approval.
Has been approved.
Okay.
But we have to have the person in place to prove that we're doing this for them. They have to have, there's a lot of checks and balances on their end, and then they'll give us the money for the.
And you have to approve the hiring position.
Yes, yeah.
Was there some sort of written agreement attached to this grant?
Written agreement from?
Between the city and Iowa West?
There's the grant reward letter that they send out.
Having done some of these before, I'd be glad to, this is an initiative, but it doesn't really much matter the distinction for this point, I don't think. When you apply, in essence, in some sense, it's the offer, and the acceptance letters is, the letter is like an acceptance, so it will, in that sense, it is contractual. They are obligated to pay the funds.
Okay.
Was that gonna?
I just was.
No, that's a really good point.
If there was something that, because we've had other grants with Iowa West Foundation, say for Playland, where we had an agreement that we would do certain things in return for, and make a match, matching contribution in return.
There is, this is exactly that. It is predicated on hiring, so that's what we need to do. And the match is 50/50. If you do the math, it's 75 the first year, 50 the second year, 25 the third year, so that equates to a 50/50 match.
Okay. Very good.
Any other questions on that item?
I can proceed with 8E, or I don't want to necessarily go out of order, but I can wait till we get to that part of the agenda.
What was your question?
I had other items on 8E, but we hadn't yet gotten.
Yeah, since we're talking about that, let's just continue talking about it.
Okay. I was gonna ask, since right now, the funds have not been appropriated for this position, and we haven't yet received the funds, will this require a budget amendment towards the end of the fiscal year, or at some point before that?
No, basically, because none of the funds will come out of our budget until our next fiscal year, when we've had time to budget for it. As soon as we hire the person, we will get the first portion of the funding that will pay their salary for the first half of the year.
Because of the timing, we'll get 75% of their salary.
Right.
With six months, and so.
Okay.
Yeah.
In next year's budget, we'll pick up the 25%.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, that takes care of the other question as well. So, I appreciate that.
All right, let's jump back to the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I'm guessing I know the answer to this, 3F? She saw that on the list, right? First, Don. He's not here. He just left, oh.
Yeah, he was in here.
Okay, I'm just gonna assume that the answer is yes.
Probably no, but that's his stuff.
The offer to buy?
Yeah. Actually, I don't know, but it's a lot next to her home, and so.
Right, right. It's just good to see that list is working. So, it's here, and then it's also number L.
I have just one quick question on finance, and it would have been on the list of checks paid, and I think Don, coming back in, is gonna be the one with the answer to this. I think I know what it is, but I want to make sure. So, there were some checks that were written to the city of Omaha. One was for 1535 28th Avenue, one for 2729 Paveage. Those two checks, was, I'm familiar with one of the properties, and I believe they had to sell before their five-year period was up for their grant. Is that? And why would that have been paid back to Omaha? Do you know?
Because that's our agreement.
Yeah, just explain how it works.
Well, we receive, have been receiving about $300,000 a year in home funds, which are HUD funds that are used for housing projects. We've been using them, kind of split between our housing infill program for first-time buyer mortgages and/or affordable housing projects. Now, we actually apply jointly with the city of Omaha.
Okay.
But HUD makes, well, somebody has to be the lead agency, and Omaha is that. We cannot apply directly ourselves. What they call it is a participating jurisdiction. And, you know, HUD goes, when they created this law, I don't know, 15 years ago, they have criteria that determines how the funds are allocated, housing growth, vacancy, whatever. Council Bluffs isn't eligible as a participating jurisdiction.
Okay.
Omaha is. But since we're contiguous to them, we can develop this consortium and apply jointly with them. So, that's what we do. The checks in question are probably mortgage payoffs, and any program income is returned to them.
Okay. And then the third check was just city of Omaha inspection, and I don't know if that is.
That is us, our two.
Okay, and that was for?
All these units have to be inspected, well, the single-family units have to be inspected to meet HQS standards before they're sold.
Okay.
It's not a high standard. You know, HQS is essentially the standard that Section 8 units are supposed to meet. And I think, in some ways, they're probably used as a basis of your rental housing code. But any multi-family units have to be inspected annually as meeting that.
Okay.
Now, we have, in the past, had our own HQS people on staff. We do not at this time. We have, in the past, hired private inspectors to do such, but we find that having Omaha come over and do that for us is the cheapest route.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Other questions on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
I have a question on 5B. In the council communication, it talked about the, you know, 2008, it was replanted with the intent of building a family destination entertainment sports facility. So, with this replat, this Wedge Resort, that is indeed the intent they're going to build?
No.
No. Okay, can you help me understand that?
Well, if you remember back in the Wedge Resort, and these, that was that.
Waterpark thing, that guy?
Is that waterpark thing?
Waterpark.
Right, right, right.
You'd be able to snow ski down the side of the building. You'd be riding your bike over a bike, whatever they call it.
Ramp.
Yeah.
Big project, no money.
So, I think it's subdivided into three lots. One of the questions, and I've talked to Matt Cox about it, because Ed Morris, who is the property owner, called on Friday and was concerned that the city wants to limit access to the internal roadway within Mid-America Center. There is a hotel developer who would like to go out onto 23rd Street, and it's not the busy section of the street, but it's the part of the street that goes to Doll Distributing. And Matt said that they would look at a, and tell me if I'm wrong, because this is what I told the property owner, that they would, you would like them to contact you and discuss it further, and that potentially, it may require a traffic study to do that. But in this packet, it says they can't do that, and so, I wanted to kind of point out that I'd had that conversation with Ed Morris. But I think there's a hotel developer who would like to put a hotel between Dolls and Steak and Blue.
Okay, full-service hotel, hopefully?
I don't think it is, but.
That's what we need under.
Okay.
Acquire enough space there.
Yeah.
It's too small. Okay, thank you. That clears that up.
I think 5A, I just want to clarify, Don, that, in the council communication, we start out talking about Hills Cedar Creek, but then in the second paragraph, it talks about preliminary subdivision plan for Forest Glen subdivision. Is that just an error, or is it? Okay. I thought maybe I got lost in this, and that something, one had something to do with the other, and just want to make sure.
On 5C, do we, I assume your department went to the planning commission? I was just kind of wondering what, why were the other two county neighbors, I don't know how close they are, because I couldn't tell where they were on the map, so 1104 and 1250, do you have any idea why they don't want this parcel annexed? They're not part of the annexation.
No, they're not. I think one is immediately to the east, and one is immediately to the west.
Okay. Are they afraid they're next or something, or?
Possibly. That's one explanation. The other is, you know, I think the owner of the property that wants to subdivide and create four lots, perhaps reached out and tried to purchase the properties to the west, and maybe that didn't go well either. So, it's purely speculation.
Okay, okay.
I would guess that maybe they will be here.
Be here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Were they at the planning commission meeting, and?
The owner was not at the time of the hearing. He came late and explained to the planning commission what his intent was, but the neighborhood seemed to have a lot of concerns about what his future plans were for the site, and I tried to explain to him how we don't have that issue in front of us yet, but it was nice that he came late, and at least he was able to tell the commission what his intention was. I guess there was a few years back, the same gentleman was contemplating a, like, a 40-lot subdivision there at one time. But that's not his intent now. He has, his home is there, he's planning on making three more lots when he's all said and done, and just have essentially a state lots.
So, the neighbors that were opposed to it, it was?
They were not still there when he made that statement.
Okay. And when they got up and spoke, did they verbalize what, was it just because of their uncertainties?
Yeah, they just wanted to know what's he going to do.
All right, thanks.
We didn't have answers.
Okay.
You know, I will just tell you, too, I mean, this Longview Loop area is, from an annexation standpoint, in county lines and city lines, is not ideal. But just looking at everybody in the council, and probably very few of you were even born when these mistakes were made.
I'm gonna agree with that, just because it's council.
You notice he said very few? You're the few that were, huh?
And so, you know, and the annexation laws are not real.
Friendly?
Easy to work with. And it is what it is. And we have, or at least I have, you know, Dick referenced, you know, a possible development in the past, and I think they were looking at buying some property to the north from the wild age. We kicked around the idea of trying to even do some urban renewal actions and trying to get more density in there, and it gives some reason for the city financially to be able to participate, perhaps, in sewer extensions, water extensions, fixing the road, so it all kind of worked. But, you know, after many, many years, it just doesn't seem to happen. And I do think the person, we've talked with him, is intending on doing a four-lot subdivision. We do have, in our code, the ability to allow an acreage lot with septic systems, there's certain rules we'll have to meet, which will be very similar to what's there. And so, that's just kind of a little bit of background.
Well, when a property's in the county, you know, the county subdivision code requires a minimum of two acres for well and septic now. So, by being annexed into the city, why would there be any reduction unless they're going to have either sewer or water in one?
Well, I think there's water there.
There's water there? Perfect. They would only need an acre then?
I mean, we do have what we call residential states, which we will allow the installation of septic systems, assuming they meet our health requirements, assuming they are a certain distance away from sewer. And I believe the minimum is an acre.
As long as they have water, right?
Yes. I mean, your other option here is, is not to annex it, but the county do what they want with it, so.
I think when somebody wants to voluntarily be annexed in, you know, I rarely can find a reason not to.
And it's, that area eventually, it makes sense, because it is, the line is a mess, and as over time, as it can be fixed voluntarily, why not?
Right.
Don, before you get too comfortable there, I had a question about 5D, the Broadway Urban Renewal Plan.
Yes.
And I think I know the answer to this question, but on page 10, you outlined some of the anticipated costs attached to the overall plan, and you have here West Broadway reconstruction from 15th Street to I-29, projected cost from FY17 to FY22, 7.5 to 8.5 million dollars. I presume that's without the other funding that we've previously discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's outside of the money that we expect to receive.
Yeah, when I was talking with Greg, and Greg can tell me that I misinterpreted, but I thought, you know, the full cost was. but I thought, you know, the full cost was twenty-seven, twenty-eight million and twenty million comes from the state. So there is, you know, that level. By putting it in a plan, doesn't necessarily obligate you or future councils that you are going to do this.
No, I understand.
But it is giving you the option if, you know, it is sought in the future. And I thought it would be appropriate to do that.
Sure. No, it's always good to at least kind of give some sort of expectation, what we expect something to eventually cost. And so I interpreted this as being, if you will, out-of-pocket costs above and beyond what we, the other funding.
Well, they include the waterworks, they include.
Sewer. Storm sewer.
Yep. Okay.
So it's not all our expense, but.
Yeah, these urban renewal plans have gotten tricky because, you know, state requires us to, you know, include projects in these.
Yeah.
Before you spend money, so.
No, and I think that putting some estimate of cost in there is a helpful thing, so that's fine. So, thank you.
Other questions in regards to the public hearings? Ordinances for first consideration?
After the public hearing, or I guess after this ordinance passes on six B, is that when we find out who is the restaurant? I'm dying to know. It's still a secret.
I thought it was like.
No, yes. Yes, well, I don't know. All I know is it's chicken. I don't know the name.
Eat More Chicken.
Is it Eat More Chicken? Because isn't that an ad for pork? Oh, it is? Okay, okay. Yeah, good. All right.
Other questions on first consideration?
The guys that were here last time said it was secret.
How about ordinances for third reading? Anything on the resolutions?
Oh, you guys knew I was gonna say something about this. Here I was all happy two weeks ago that, see? So here I was all happy two weeks ago that all four bids came in under budget. Now we're about twenty-five percent high, which is over three hundred thousand dollars. What, why?
You sign eight A, I presume?
Yes.
Well, my guess is that's what the bidders chose, is, I mean, that's why it's over. Doing a little research, the engineer talked to the bidder. It came down to only a few items that really made up the bulk of that overage. And it appears to be the depth of the trench. We talked about previously the scope of this project and how deep that trench is. And next to the levee, there's also some concern about access and the ability to get large trucks and so that could, you know, when you have to scale your equipment down, that just means more time and effort to actually do the project. So those costs were then built into a few items. The other cost that was looked at was de-watering. This particular contractor and the other ones are all familiar with our soil conditions and are concerned about, it varies greatly based on the proximity to the river. This is really close to the river. The condition of the river elevation is unknown, so they built in some costs there, assuming that it's all on their responsibility for de-watering. So if it takes more effort, they're gonna pay for that. So it's a, unfortunately, that's a condition we can't really do anything about.
So does this put us in a shortage, I mean, if all of the, if all the bids start coming in twenty-five percent higher, what's that gonna do to the whole project estimate?
Well, if all of them do, that's gonna be ten million dollars, so that's a huge issue.
That's what I'm saying.
But, you know, we're way too early in the program to know that. We have done some optimization on two other projects that we've halved the projects already. I mean, literally the costs have gone in half. So I feel like we're okay in year one. We'll certainly, that's one thing we're monitoring throughout, obviously, is we have a fixed amount of money because any amount that's over, what we projected, comes out of the city's pot, not anybody else's. So we can't get any more grant money, so obviously we're keeping a close look on that.
It's ten-year, ten-year span, right?
So I'm not concerned today. If the trend continues and we're twenty-five to thirty percent on every project, obviously that's a concern.
I was gonna ask along the same lines, we had allocated, I think it's two point four million dollars in loss funds for these levy projects. MR one is now at one point eight million dollars, as we just discussed. And your estimate for MR two was six hundred thousand dollars. So that puts us up pretty close to that total amount. So, yeah, I was a little bit concerned whether or not even on year one, we have allocated sufficient funding in the CIP for this.
The, I believe it's two point five million that you referenced is for.
And we've already looked at two point four coming out of that. You're right.
That's for FY fifteen, so we have another allocation in FY sixteen, which is actually the current year. So there is available funding for these projects. On top of that, we've already received our first one million dollar check from the state through the flood mitigation program. So that helps offset these costs as well. So there's plenty of funds available to pay these bills. Again, it's a cash flow issue. As long as we maintain a sufficient balance, we should be fine. And right now, we certainly have that.
Terrific. Thank you for that.
Sure. Anything else?
We'll wait till you sit down.
Are you on six B too?
No. I could, well, I mean, Don put that item on there. I may be able to answer it depending on what the scope of the question is.
I just have a question that will help me understand it. So will the tap on fees cover that three hundred and forty-five thousand that the city pays to the developer? Or is that completely like a separate thing?
They'll help. I mean, that's an open-ended question. Will they help? Yes. Will they cover it?
The fees haven't been establishedly yet, so.
Do you do that by resolution or ordinance?
It's an ordinance, I believe.
It looks like it's about forty-five thousand dollars short right now as the crow flies.
But you will be passing an ordinance at some point in time.
Okay.
If you so desire. I mean, the real question, I think, is, what is that fee gonna be? You don't have a limit on what that fee could be per lot. Per acre. It could be whatever. You know, you just can't make it to a level that.
Inhibits the development.
Exactly.
You have to pick up property tax and sales tax off the construction and so you don't want to price them out of the market.
Right, okay.
What this essentially does is the developer will do it and the fee will be put in the lots. The developer builds on those. He obviously has to pay that, but I assume he would open it up to other builders, so they're gonna be sharing in that cost.
I had a question for Matt on that project as well. It's, it looks at moving funds out of the Tenth Avenue Sewer Project. And I was just gonna ask, is there any risk involved in delaying that?
The Tenth Avenue Sewer Project?
Yeah, it talks about it's possible that funds could be allocated on twenty sixteen dash seventeen Capital Improvement Program. And that is, I looked it up, and that is the Tenth Avenue Sewer Extension, which runs. That's in the CIP.
I think you're referring that out of the staff report that's going with the VHI?
Yeah, in the staff write-up, it says with respect to, we are talking about eight B, correct? And it says that it is possible that funds could be allocated in the, or from, I think it means, the FY sixteen dash seventeen Capital Improvement Program, CIP. And I looked that up and that particular line item is that Tenth Avenue Sewer.
But it's not, it wasn't intended to single out a specific project. I think we probably could have used a little stronger language. In order for us to have cash, which we do not have for this, this will have to be programmed in the sixteen seventeen budget.
Okay.
Capital budget.
Okay.
Which to my understanding, we have not done. We are working on it now. That's the only way to cover it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. It does.
I think, I think Don's referring to fiscal years twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen rather than line item sixteen dash one seven.
Okay, well, just kind of implied that we're gonna take some money, reallocate it from that project to a different project, which can in fact be done. And I just wanted to make sure that if we were delaying another project, that we weren't creating some sort of risk in our maintenance program.
Yes, and actually that sewer extension project you referenced is one we absolutely want to do. So we would prefer not to delay that.
Okay. Thank you.
On eight C, I don't know if anybody from Iowa West is, no, you're not on the Iowa West board. Okay. No, I don't have a question. I just wanted to make a comment because, you know, here's a perfect, yet another perfect example of the great partner that Iowa West is to the city and all the citizens. I, a water play area, the community room, that'll be open with restrooms, those are appreciated. In the plaza area, I just, I just think it's, you know, I've been waiting for phase two, so I'm pretty excited about this. And I assume the water play area is gonna be different from the one in Fairmont?
It's much different.
Okay.
If I could, when I authored this resolution and sent it through, it was my intention and my hope that we'd have the agreement in place by sometime early this week. Pete was actually out of town all of last week and most of it. So the agreement that goes with this is not on file. They finished it today, so I have copies. But if you want to lay it over and send it through complete, we certainly can do that. There's nothing, there's no hurry. I just like to get the money as soon as I can.
Do you have copies of them?
I do, yeah.
Because, I mean, we can read it in between meetings if we have time. I don't know.
It's totally up to council. You can take a look and see.
Yeah, it depends on how onerous this is.
It's the same agreement that the council authorized when we accepted the initial eight hundred and fifty thousand. Numbers are a little bit different. But if you do want to lay it over, I would recommend lay it over till November the twenty-third. That's when we have another action coming related to the park.
Any other questions for Larry? Any other questions on the resolutions? Any questions on the liquor licenses?
Yeah, I have just one. I just want to make it certain that I understand. On the one that had disturbance calls, when you give, on this report, when you give the number of arrests and what it was for, is that over the one-year period of their last licensure? Okay. That's all I needed to know? Two in a year is not bad.
Yeah, I agree. All right. See you at seven o'clock.
Okay.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. September twenty-seventh, Papa Roach and headliner five finger death punch, Rock Council Bluffs. Then rock opera takes the stage with the return of TSO, November eighteenth. Over at the convention center, over two hundred exhibitors are on hand at the Callahan Craft Show. And October eighteenth, vendors aspire to inspire at the Wedding Essentials Idea Show. Remember, the MAC offers free parking for all events. Tickets, information, and more at midamericacenter.com.